Item 8.1 on the workshop is presentation, discussion, and possible action on city-initiated rezonings to middle housing, Mih middle housing, and potential modifications to the middle housing zoning district. And I believe Mr. Ostrowski will be presenting this by Zoom. He will be on Zoom and we'll all be here. And I see Alyssa in the front row to answer questions. It's Tom, the director. Yes, we can.
Their public input phase of this process, which included three meetings here in June, as well as we developed an online engagement website. So we got some really good feedback overall. I think we got good engagement from the meetings that we did hold. About 40 people on average attended each one of those. And while it may not have been, you know, the number, considering the number of lots that we were rezoning, the feedback we did get was really spot on and helped us make and formulate some of these recommendations moving forward. So I do want to thank everybody who did show up to those meetings to provide that input, as well as the staff who took part in that as well. So tonight, based on the feedback, I want to present a couple of options. One relates to general ordinance amendments relating to the middle housing zoning district. There were a couple of things that we heard that, you know, staff is looking for some direction on from city council that we feel will make the ordinance a little bit stronger, as well as reduce some of the concerns that we've heard from the public in regards to rezoning of some of these properties. And then following that, I'll walk through each one of the MAP areas and provide staff's recommendation on each one of those areas, and then look for council's consensus for moving forward with the official rezoning process for each one of those areas. So first, the two things that we're looking for direction on from council relating to the general ordinance changes. Currently, within the middle housing zoning district, it requires that when a structure requires more than three parking spaces to be provided, basically if you have more than four or more bedrooms, you do need to provide parking in, not in the front yard. And what this has caused is that it's caused some concern relating mainly on the development side and really not being desirable by, from a development standpoint, of changing the zoning from, let's say, a general suburban, which would allow you to park at least four up in the front yard, to middle housing because you would then only be able to park three in the front yard. So one small tweak that we were looking to do to this ordinance to make the middle housing district more desirable was to change that parking requirement from three to four in the front yard and allow that within the middle housing zoning district. This would make it more consistent with what we would see with typical single-family developments and provide a little bit more incentive and desirability for the middle housing zoning district. So that's a very small tweak with that. But the bigger one that I want to have a discussion with this evening is when we went through the middle housing public input sessions and just overall, one of the big concerns that we heard is the shared housing uses being allowed everywhere within where middle housing is the zoning district. And there may be areas within the city where maybe shared housing isn't appropriate, but middle housing is. So one of the options that we'd like to present in front of you would be a way to remove shared housing as a permitted use from the middle housing zoning district, but allow it as an overlay. So very similar to like we do with RUU. Now, we wouldn't do the 50% petition thing, but very similar to what we do with RUU where we restrict occupancy within a certain area. This would allow us to grant additional occupancy. So allow the shared housing units within particular areas, but maybe not every single area that is zone middle housing. And that seemed to would address some of the concerns that we've heard where shared housing may be more appropriate the closer that you get to campus or where there's better traffic flow or access points, just because of the density that you would see within particular properties. So those are the two general ordinance modifications that we look for council's direction on. And then the following next five slides, we'll go over each one of the MAP areas that we have, that you've seen before with respect to the general areas of the city that we've identified for city-initiated. And these recommendations are based off of that overlay district, the removal of shared housing from middle housing and creating an overlay for particular areas within the city. So the MAP 1 recommendations, this is the area generally east of campus, kind of Livo, Cooner Streets, Dominic Drive area, Ash Street, some of the areas that you've already seen requests for on the private side. All of these areas, we're recommending to kind of proceed as is except for Area C. So we'd recommend that all these areas proceed with city-initiated middle housing zoning with a high occupancy overlay that would allow shared housing. The only area that we would recommend changing here, and with all of these slides, anywhere you see a highlighted yellow is a change from kind of that middle housing and shared housing. Area C, the area off of Chimney Hill, we would recommend removing from the city-initiated rezoning in its entirety. We received a lot of public opposition to that. The area is kind of on an island by itself. The area has some floodplain, and it may be a better candidate just for a privately-initiated rezoning in the future. We don't see a lot of value of adding that to the city-initiated at this point. So we'd recommend removing Area C from the city-initiated rezonings.
Did you want any comments slide by slide or not?
However, we'd like to proceed.
How do you want to, you got comments on this one, or you want to do?
I think we should go slide by slide.
Okay. At least one council member would like to go side by side, and I'll join him. So MAP 1, you see the recommendations there. This is a workshop, so we're giving them direction or redirection, depending on how we feel about this. We haven't really discussed the overall, the overlay thing, which I think probably requires more discussion at the end. But taking the map, go ahead. Anything you have?
No, I was just gonna say, I'm good with what MAP 1 looks like.
Ms., yeah, Ms. Coona.
Mr. Ostrowski, just a clarification question. If Area C is removed from city-initiated zoning, does that prevent or inhibit an individual property owner from bringing a rezoning request to the city council to rezone their individual property to middle housing?
It does not.
Thank you.
Mr. Hancy?
Thank you, Mayor Nichols. Mr. Ostrowski, so Area C, if I'm reading your slide correctly, was the only one in which you received opposition to the plan as proposed?
No, not necessarily. So all of the comments that we received, we did put within the packet. There were other areas that we did receive opposition from, but Area C, we received a significant amount of opposition. So, you know, we try to take that opposition and kind of get at the root cause of like, what is the concern to see if it can be addressed? But sometimes if they can't, then we can't do anything about that. But Area C, we received a significant amount based off of the people who attended those meetings or who supplied comments to the website.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor Nichols.
Mr. Maloney?
Well, since we're on Area C, Mike, isn't this the area where we have a lot of patio homes and private homes in the Chimney Hill area? Isn't it right behind the old Albertson store?
Yeah, it's behind the old Albertson store. There's some developments that are there. But one of the other issues that, aside from just the opposition that we received, there's a small lot on the corner there that has some floodplain. And one of the things with the floodplain is we're going to reserve that, any floodplain properties for Phase 2. So again, this is probably just a better property that, if the private sector, you know, if the owners of that area want to take that forward, that it be done privately.
Right. Well, I agree. I think you did a great job here. All the other properties, I'm very familiar with, and I think they're properly, they're in the right category. So, good job.
Okay, I think you can proceed.
Okay, MAP 2. So we'll go through these. Area L, which is down here on the bottom left-hand side of the screen, staff is recommending to proceed with just middle housing and not shared housing. You know, given its proximity, the neighborhood context surrounding it, it's got a number of single family to the west of it, felt that it was more appropriate as just middle housing, especially with some of the access points leading to it. Area M, which was across the street on Anderson, this area, we'd recommend to proceed with both middle housing and the overlay, which would allow shared housing. Pine Ridge has got a mix of different unit types in that location, as well as it's adjacent to some multi-development, family, multifamily development a little bit further to the east. Area N, which is down by Lemon Tree, this is another area, very similar to Area L, did receive some opposition there, so would recommend only proceeding with middle housing and not shared housing, but also with Area N on the portion right here, on this kind of lower portion of the area. It does have some access issues for turnaround, so very similar to, you know, what we saw with like Avenue A rezoning that came before you previously. There's some access issues here. So what we'd recommend doing for the meantime is modifying Area N to remove this portion from any city-initiated rezonings until that access, if that access could be improved at a future date. Area PQRSTU, we would recommend that this area proceed with both middle housing and the overlay, except for the areas with Colgate Circle, as well as Stanford Circle, which is right here. So this kind of eastern part of this area, we'd recommend that that just proceed with middle housing, just because of the connections that it makes back into the neighborhoods. Area V, which is on the top up here, again, given some of the limited access points there, would recommend that that area just proceed with middle housing and not an overlay. Area W would recommend, this is an area that's pretty built out, it's got a number of multifamily or duplex-type structures in there already, would recommend proceeding both with middle housing and the overlay. And then finally, Area X, right off of Dartmouth there, given some of the access points there too, and the tightness, would recommend just proceeding with middle housing zoning and not an overlay. And overall, I mean, one of the things with middle housing and some of the reasons why we're recommending to proceed with middle housing in some of these areas is that the areas that are probably going to be rezoned just to middle housing, you'll likely see that development incrementally over time. You're not going to see typically a massive redevelopment of an entire area. Areas that, you know, that you may see that are also have the overlay or allow shared housing units, then those are the areas that you're probably going to see some faster kind of turnover with the properties and redevelopments of those properties.
Ms. Harville?
Thank you. I have some concerns about the Anderson-Brentwood recommendation. We're always talking about affordable housing. And that gummit, that is affordable housing on those streets. You can see dozens and dozens and dozens of students out there waiting for the bus, a lot of families that are there, and you want to turn it into shared, and it's going to be more expensive. People aren't going to be able to live there. So, you know, come on, let's walk the talk. We talk about affordable housing, you take these apartment complexes away from the dozens and dozens and dozens of residents, you know, we're hypocrites. And so I would not support that.
So I would, I would add that the affordable housing nature is one of the goals of middle housing, and that's one of the reasons why the district was created. The intent with middle housing is it provides some ability to provide some greater density in terms of lots. So at some point in time, where, let's say, a property redevelops, maybe that single lot turns into two. And as I just mentioned, that because you're just rezoning it to middle housing, you're not going to have the high demand from the market pressures that you're going to see with the shared housing. So I believe you're speaking to Area L, which is one of the areas that we're just recommending to proceed with middle housing and not allow the shared housing uses, which are typically the impetus that starts that transformation of those neighborhoods, where you start to see that, you know, greater increase in property values because of the shared housing units. So I think honestly, the rezoning to middle housing actually helps with affordability because it can allow greater lot splits as properties redevelop over time. And with middle housing, I see that happening as incrementally and not just in one fell swoop.
Well, I-
Go back, return to that map, there's more questions. Okay, and so you're talking about L, M, and N. Basically, you're not recommending any shared housing in those?
The only area we'd recommend shared housing is on Pine Ridge. We're seeing, you know, some higher density stuff here with multifamily, it's already got some duplex, there's the ability for some redevelopment. So on the other side of Anderson, we would recommend that this area be allowed to have the overlay district.
And I'm not going to support that. In addition to the residents, there's so many international students that live there because of the proximity to HEB, to Walgreen, to some of the shopping. And I think maybe let's take a look at it and see what can we do to improve this area to really call it affordable housing instead of more of this other stuff when you're talking about density. Come on, there's people out there with kids and playgrounds and everything else. So I'm just going to ask you to revisit those two specific streets, because I'm up and down them all the time, Brentwood and Anderson. Let's look and see how we can improve those and make those truce, family-oriented neighborhoods.
Mr. Smith?
I guess I want to add on to what was previously said. I think, you know, I'm familiar with these areas, and Pine Ridge, okay, I can go along with your recommendation there. But I'm particularly concerned about the PQRSTU. Again, it's the same thing. There is a lot of existing affordable housing in that area, and it, and basically, we're increasing the value of that by allowing for a higher density, and that will ultimately reduce the inventory of that existing affordable housing. And when those people are displaced, where will they go? There isn't new affordable housing being built anywhere. I'm just concerned that we are removing affordable housing from the inventory. And then a question, and I guess we'll get to the overlay discussion at some point, but I can see an overlay for a broad area and how that would function, but if you had an area that, but in discussing how that overlay gets implemented, and you said it wouldn't be by the whole subdivision, you know, the same way that a RUU has done, it would be done on a, maybe on a case-by-case basis. But I can tell you that, say, you had Area L, where you're saying let's proceed with middle housing but not shared housing, but one shared housing in that area will make that whole area go shared housing, just because it will make that neighborhood, it will convert the nature of that neighborhood. And so I think we need to talk about how that overlay takes place and that it needs to be a more area-wide consideration than a case-by-case consideration, but that, I guess that's for later in the presentation. But I'm not, I can't support the PQRSTU recommendation or the Area L, Area N.
Are you referring to the overlay, shared housing overlay part of it, or you wouldn't want it to go at all to middle housing?
Well-
Because there's two separate-
Yeah, there are two separate things, and since we haven't had the discussion about how that overlay works yet, it's hard to know exactly how that mechanic works.
Can we hold that, just, we'll comment on the rest of the slides and then come back to the overlay, and then we'll go back to the slides?
Sure.
All right. Yes, on this map, without discussing the overlay details. Yes, Ms. Coona.
Mr. Ostrowski, Councilmember Harville brought up apartment complexes. She mentioned that. It was my understanding that there are no apartment complexes in any of the blue boxes. Is that correct?
I don't believe there are any apartment complexes. When we went through the process for the city-initiated with the working group, we specifically pulled out any areas that we would downzone. So any areas that were zoned R4 or multifamily, we remove those from consideration.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. And then my last question is, I know one of the benefits of increasing density near the A&amp;M campus is a reduced traffic congestion piece. Are these areas in the one-mile radius or the two-mile radius, or are they farther out from campus?
So Areas L, M, and N are approximately within a one mile of campus.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Maloney?
I think for the general public, it'd be a good idea, Mike, if you'd tell us exactly what middle housing is and what it isn't, and whether or not we're allowed to have a rezoning to shared housing inside a middle housing zoning. So if you would explain that.
All right. And maybe, I think it would be appropriate to talk about the overlay and the process because before we kind of jump into the next maps, just so everybody has kind of a same understanding of what we're working with. So middle housing is the new zoning district that the council adopted late last year that allows for a variety of product types to be put within a single zoning district. So this would allow, you know, single-family homes, townhomes, duplexes, triplexes, small and medium multiplexes, up to 12 units, within the same zoning district. So it allows that flexibility to add some needed density within appropriate areas of the city. And one of the intents with that is, was to reduce some of the pressure that we're seeing in some of the other neighborhoods, where a lot of those properties have been turned into shared housing units or stealth dorms. This was intended to allow for some of those places to go, for those units to provide that additional density. Within middle housing zoning district, there is a use that's allowed that's called shared housing, which allows you to have more than one family living within a single unit. So that is one of the concerns that, you know, we heard from the public is the fear of shared housing units being allowed in every one of these areas. While they didn't have a ton of concerns always with just the middle housing and the product types allowed within there, we did hear a lot of concerns regarding the kind of what was called unlimited occupancy, even though there is a limitation to it, being allowed within particular structures. So the thought process behind the overlay, and I think Councilmember Smith was kind of spot on in terms of there needs to be, and what we do is, when we develop the overlay is develop a set of standards and kind of, you know, what's the smallest size an overlay could be? We wouldn't want to do an overlay of a single property. We're going to be looking at a larger groupings of property like these, like a whole area like, you know, M, or like a whole area like W, because that provides a better consistency throughout that general area. So as, you know, if council is supportive of removing shared housing out of the middle housing zoning district, and then creating an overlay to allow shared housing in particular areas of the city, we would develop those standards, and we'd put, you know, minimum size requirements that would need to be put in place in order to allow those types of uses within those particular areas.
I think that's, I think you're going right to the crest of the problem there, is that when I look at a middle housing idea, I'm thinking about zoning. When something's owned commercial, I expect a certain product inside that zoning district. And I think middle housing would be the same way. Would you expect the single-family home, the townhome, the duplex, or fourplex, or even a 12-unit, but no more than that? So I think if we were to separate and keep the shared housing outside of the middle housing, it would be less foreboding and would be able to provide more affordable housing.
And that's, you know, one of the things that we saw with that is that, you know, typically what has driven up property values and property sales has been the shared housing, right? When you can rent to 10, 11 people, you can garner a larger profit margin, therefore the sale of the property is higher. Just by rezoning it to middle housing doesn't necessarily, again, allow the shared housing units. And the shared housing component, by removing that, I think can help a lot with property value and the concerns that you're seeing with that, because if that is removed, you don't have the high profit margins that you're seeing within some of those particular units.
Exactly. But what we'd be looking for in the middle housing is a safeguard to prevent the shared housing units from getting in there, to sneak in there, because as was pointed out, if you have one coming in with shared housing, you're all going to go to shared housing because the money's there, the market's there.
So if there's no overlay, let's say, council proceeds and says, yes, remove shared housing, create the overlay. If there's no overlay, shared housing is not an allowable use anymore in middle housing. Therefore, they can't do that. They can't just sneak in there. Just very similarly, you know, what we've done now with general suburban, you know, a builder or a construction person can't come in and present a plan and saying, hey, I want to have this 10-bed, 10-bath unit that meets the shared housing definition in this general suburban zone. It's not allowed anymore. And if council takes that action tonight, it wouldn't be allowed anymore in the middle housing, only if you had that overlay.
Well, again, I thought the overlay would be like a zoning. It would be protecting you from being able to allow shared housing in there, that the middle housing type would only be allowed in there.
So the middle housing would be the base zoning district that would allow the single-family, the two-family, all the way up to the multiplexes. The overlay would allow the shared housing.
May I ask Mr. Maloney a question, clarification? Are you suggesting or arguing that you wouldn't want any shared housing in any of the middle housing areas, period?
Exactly.
I would like, I would see it as a zoning classification, no different than commercial. If it's a commercial, you're allowed certain product, but not others.
But if you go down that trail, that essentially takes one of the most important legs out of the whole process we're going through, because what we were trying to do was find investor landing places for the market pressure for shared housing. And that was what stimulated the middle housing, not the only reason, because there's lots of other investor products that might be interesting, and that's good. But without allowing any shared housing in any of the middle housing areas, then you're back to square one.
But no, not all of these have to be. For instance, if you look down at Hollick Drive there, that's fine. But if I go to Pine Ridge Drive, I'd be fine with shared housing there.
That's what I'm trying to clarify.
Yeah, I want to clarify.
Okay, and that's what they're doing. They're going through some of these, they're taking, they're taking shared housing options out of some of them. They definitely are.
Okay, that's what I would do, like with L, for instance, that's really working-class families in there, and a lot of rental too, but also a lot of owner-occupied properties there. But Pine Ridge, that's immensely, it's all duplex and rental.
And Area L-
Shared would be fine.
And the recommendation for Area L is not to have the overlay, just proceed with middle housing and no overlay options in L.
Not allow the-
In L, yeah.
Share housing.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you for clarifying in my mind what we were discussing there.
I was just trying to get it straight myself.
Are we discussing overlay right now?
Yeah. Did you want to continue, Mr. Ostrowski, with the overlay process?
Yeah, so like I said, we'd have to have a minimum size requirements for the overlay. I think oftentimes, the overlay would be city-initiated because we're going to have some of these larger areas, and this gives the council the ability to kind of indicate where they feel shared housing is appropriate within the community. So I think overall, it allows us to address a lot of the concerns that we've heard with the fear of shared housing creeping into some of these areas, and by not allowing it within every single one of these areas, I think it can help with the other component that we wanted to try to preserve with middle housing, and that's that affordability component, right? One of the, one of the big things with middle housing in allowing for that incremental density over time is that you preserve some of that affordability component. It may not be true affordable, but if, for example, if you have a lot that you're able to now split into two instead of one because of the minimum lot size is now smaller, that lot size, that cost per lot should be lower to the end user, in which would then reduce the cost of that housing.
But you, the overlay, one of the purposes of the overlay, I gather, is that it would have to go before planning and zoning and the council, so they can make a judgment as to whether the area in there is suitable relative to the surrounding areas for shared housing. Right now, the administrator, Mr. Ostrowski, makes the decision based on a set of criteria whether to approve a specific shared housing plan. Is that correct?
So right now, shared housing is allowed in middle housing. So if someone gets a property that's rezoned to middle housing today, which you've had a few on the private side, they come forward with a minor site plan. If they meet those requirements, they're able to have a shared housing unit. What this process would do is it would add an extra level where they would also have to have an overlay zoning district. So it's really two zoning classifications. You've got your base zoning, which would be middle housing, and then your overlay zoning, which would be, you know, a high occupancy overlay, very similar to like you have a RUU, you have a base zoning of general suburban, and then you have a RUU which restricts the occupancy. This would just give you your base zoning of middle housing, and then a high occupancy overlay to allow you to have additional occupancy. So yes, P&amp;Z would need to provide a recommendation on both the base zoning of middle housing as well as the overlay. And you could do that at the same time as we look at these areas.
Mr. Wright?
I was just going to make some general comments. I'm in favor of what you have left out in map two. I've been a big proponent of middle housing since it was introduced because I do think that in these areas it will lead to redevelopment with more density, but not like huge high-rises that can allow families to live there or students. But I think the best thing we've done is pull shared housing out of that because from last meeting and any meeting before that, it felt like every time it came up, everyone just saw Ag Shacks everywhere. And I think that pulling shared housing out and having to ask that as a separate will at least spur fourplexes or things like that that can lead to more density and hopefully cheaper housing. So I'm generally in favor of all this just because this is recommendation anyways, and if we want to hash out where the overlay needs to be, we can do that when it's time.
Mr. Smith, you get, you had your questions on overlay.
I appreciate the clarification, and I do like the idea that basically, shared housing is a zone. It's an overlay zone. And it will go before P and Z and council for review. It won't just be an administrative, you know, like we didn't intend for that to happen, but it happened anyway because this is better. I like the idea of the overlay better. I mean, I do have some specific concerns with some of the areas, but I guess we'll get to those, you know, in due time.
Well, that's true, but I think our comments here tonight are going to provide some direction back to staff as to how far to pursue. PQRSTU that you concerned with.
Yeah.
That's on the record now.
Those, I'm fine with them being middle housing, but I'm not fine with them having the overlay. And Area V and X as well. Fine middle housing, but not with the overlay.
Okay, are there other questions or comments on the overlay or the process? Mr. Yancey?
Thank you, Mayor Nichols. Yeah, this, I mean, this is way different, and I think it's brilliant, Michael, what you've done here. But it does require all of us to start thinking differently, right? All of our discussions to this point have been middle housing equals shared housing equals Ag Shacks, basically. Not all, not just Ag Shacks. I got set straight on that a couple meetings back. But Ag Shacks were certainly allowed. Now, middle housing doesn't mean Ag Shacks or automatic shared housing anymore. If I'm getting this right, Michael, you're proposing that the, not the RU, but the WHO, the high occupancy overlay, is now where shared housing would go, and that's only where it could go. True or false?
That's correct. The only other places that WHO would be, or the shared housing is allowed, is in some of the multi-family zoning districts.
Yeah. Okay, and so, I mean, and it gives you the opportunity to allow some of those other products within middle housing that aren't necessarily objectionable to the folks around, and still have your middle housing zone, but to more specifically identify exactly where shared housing's going. Am I with you?
That's correct.
And Mayor, as a practical matter, I would think we would have to decide on whether or not we agree with that concept first before we start delving into the geographical areas and trying to apply or not apply the standard with which we've yet to agree. Would you not agree?
Well, we're given direction. I think we can, at the end, kind of sum it all up. I would want to temper a little bit. You were putting a bunch of equal signs in your initial comment there. To some of us, middle housing did not equal Ag Shacks, period, because shared housing had to be approved by the administrator, has to be, in order to build something like that. And there are a lot of constraints, some of which on many lots in many of these middle housing zones can't be met in terms of impervious cover and parking spaces per bedroom and all of that. Pretty much says that not every lot in middle housing, under an overlay even, is going to qualify for a shared housing designation because it's just a law of the land use. So it wasn't entirely one equals one, the next, the next. But I do like the general idea. Although my only concern is the cumbersomeness of this, and if Mr. Ostrowski can assure me that from a process point of view, as we go through this, we can make it work smoothly. Now that he said that it's going to be city-initiated, and we're actually defining areas that we would automatically, well, we would basically agree, as a council, yeah, that's okay for not only middle housing, but the overlay as well. That means the individual property owner doesn't have to go through that overlay process, which requires an application to get through the planning and zoning and all of that. So I see there's still a little bit of fuzziness in there, but the more we talk about it, I think it'll become clearer. Are there other questions or comments on the overlay? Yes, Ms. Kuna.
Mr. Ostrowski, I had a couple of questions about the overlay. It would be helpful for me, when we're discussing this, if on the map, we could somehow identify the collection of Ag Shacks that are already on the ground, like when we're considering overlays, it would help me to know, are we talking about an area that is already built up that way, or are we talking about an area that doesn't have any when we're considering the areas? Do you see, in your thinking about an overlay, would it only be city-initiated? Could a group of residents petition to have a high occupancy overlay? And what would be the minimum geographic area that you would consider if residents brought those forward? Have you given any thought to that?
We have, and we don't have a specific, like acreage count, and we'll go back and kind of look at some of these areas and kind of get an averaging of what that would be. But it would not necessarily always have to be city-initiated. So think of, you know, one that just recently went before you for middle housing on Aurora Court. That property owner owned the entire street and all those properties where, you know, they could come forward and request an overlay if they wanted to. So what we're looking for with that is that, you know, there's kind of that general context of the surrounding properties and that general area is similar in nature with those. So, you know, as we bring these forward to you, you know, we can kind of identify, you know, what structures are within the immediate proximity. But keeping in mind, I mean, all of those structures that already have been built were built as single-family. But we can at least provide some information, as we read up our staff reports and recommendation of what we're kind of seeing as within the surrounding area.
And then, Mr. Ostrowski, when you identify an area for a high occupancy overlay, those properties still have to meet the, all the requirements. Because my understanding, previous, like last week, if you had asked me about shared housing and middle housing, I would have told you, shared housing is a two-step process, middle housing is step one, and then they have to submit a site plan to you, and it has to meet all these requirements. It is not automatic, and it was not automatic last week, that just because you had middle housing meant you could do shared housing. There were a lot of restrictions that didn't mean every lot under an overlay could be shared housing. That would still apply, right?
That's correct. So the process you would see here is that you'd rezoned a middle housing or a zoning district, and then you'd have the overlay on top of that. And you can do that at the same time, and I think it's appropriate to do it at the same time. But you still have that step for a minor site plan or a building permit that needs to be turned in. And the shared housing needs to meet all of those requirements within it, just like any other commercial building or business that opens. They need to meet a certain set of standards in terms of parking and setbacks and so forth. Shared housing is no different with that. So they'd still have to go through that process.
And then finally, Mr. Ostrowski, what would it mean for the Aurora Court applicant that has gotten their middle housing? I mean, would they have to go back and request a high occupancy overlay? I'm just wondering what it means for the ones that we've already rezoned as middle housing? Would they then? Go ahead.
So yes, they'd have to, we'd have to rezone and put an overlay over them. But however, since shared housing isn't allowed use within middle housing currently, if they pull their site plans and convert those to shared housing, they would be allowed to continue with shared housing. It would just be considered a non-conforming use under that zoning district. But the intent with this would be that if council is agreeable to creating this overlay, that we'd come back and city-initiate and put an overlay over them to allow that to be a permitted use within that area.
And then, would this delay the rezonings that we're trying to move forward timeline-wise?
No, I think we can still accomplish this probably by the end of October. So kind of just a general timeframe that we'd be looking at. Sometime, probably in early September, we take the amendments to create the WHO and modify the parking requirements to P and Z. We then come back to council in September to create the district, and then in October, we'd move forward with the rezonings of the properties.
Thank you, Ms. Kuna. Thank you, Mr. Ostrowski. I think we've got a general understanding of this overlay idea. There's still quite a bit of work in the details, but I think we can move forward, and then we'll give you more direction consensus at the end on that. But let's move ahead with the maps.
Okay, so map three, Area Y, this is kind of south side. We have one property that had already been rezoned to middle housing, and then at the last council meeting, a property owner was requesting to rezone several of those properties, and that motion failed 3-3. We'd recommend that Y be an area, because we see a lot of what are shared housing units already in Area Y. It's really close to campus. You have that high density already there. We'd recommend Area Y be proceeding with middle housing and the overlay. Same thing on Only Harvey. A lot of those units already are shared housing-type units. Recommend proceeding with both middle housing and the overlay there. Areas BB and CC did receive quite a bit of opposition and concerns with the context of the surrounding neighborhoods. So what we'd recommend for these two areas is we'd remove CC in its entirety, and we'd remove almost all of BB except for Chalet and Swiss Courts, which are right here, where we'd recommend just going to middle housing, but not allowing shared housing. So on this map, Y, Z would be middle housing and overlay, and then this portion of BB only would be middle housing. And then the rest of BB and CC would not move forward as city-initiated.
So it would just not be middle housing at all?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I like that.
Okay, everybody's, everybody looks like they're okay with that suggestion. Go ahead to map four.
So map four, this is a large area, a lot of yacht lots. This area is about two miles from campus, which was one of the reasons that, you know, in terms of that and the context of the surrounding area, looking at just rezoning all of these to middle housing with no shared housing at all. Most of this area is already built out. I will tell you, you know, aside from the ones that we've removed already, this area, especially like EE, did receive a considerable amount of opposition from some of the residents in there. I think a lot of those concerns too came from the shared housing concerns. But staff, given kind of its proximity, its ability to support additional affordable housing, the transition, that incremental redevelopment over time, feel that it's a really good location, appropriate for middle housing moving forward, but not necessary shared housing because of its distance from campus as well as the affordable nature of it.
Yeah.
Any questions?
That all makes sense. That's great.
I think with the removal of shared housing from that, I think that works fine.
That's, I think that's.
You got a good consensus on that, Mr. Ostrowski.
And then map number five, this is the area generally by the barracks. JJKK, LLMM, we'd recommend proceeding with, as is, middle housing and shared housing uses, very high density over there. HH and II, we had some conversation about, and really opened a council suggestion as well. We're recommending to proceed with just middle housing and not shared housing, given some of the context of the surrounding area. It includes Mission Ranch, it has some rural character to it, that feeling that some of the shared housing units may not be appropriate in the context of that surrounding area. However, there are a number of townhomes there that do have five bedrooms, so it is an area that we could consider doing the overlay as well. But at this point, staff is recommending to proceed just with the middle housing.
Yep.
Ms. Kuna.
Yeah, just a clarification question. If you make the recommendations as you've listed on this slide, and then at some point in the future, they say, hey, we would like a high occupancy overlay, just because we don't put one on today, doesn't mean at some point in the future, that area couldn't be considered again. Is that true?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but Mike, that's true of every zoning period, isn't it? I mean, you could always come back and ask for a rezoning.
You can.
Yeah, okay.
But this is something that we could look, you know, as we move and do comprehensive plan updates.
Right.
You know, we look at future land use and how developments are occurring over time. You know, if it's turning into more of a high-density area where maybe it's appropriate for shared housing or higher occupancy, you know, we could come back at a future phase with city-initiated and rezone some of these areas as well.
Right.
Mr. Yancey?
Thank you, Mayor Nichols. I would just point out conceptually that an area like this, I mean, this is student housing here. And every time, like H2 and I2, every time we carve it out and don't put the overlay, that's a particular pressure point in our student housing, and some of the pressures that the neighborhoods are getting, that we just turn up the dial, right? Whereas if you know you're in a student housing area, and it's almost exclusively dedicated to it, why not go, you know, with the overlay in those areas to relieve the pressures, at least incrementally, that we know we're going to get in the working-class housing areas and single-family residential neighborhoods?
Yeah, I agree with you, and that's why JJKK, LL, and MM are all with the overlay, which makes perfect sense.
But you don't think H2 and I2 are?
Well, but as Elizabeth pointed out, they could always come back, because the unique character of those particular, those two sections, you could always come back and say, oh, we want to be the same. But it doesn't preclude them, but right now, they're asking to be just the middle housing. But you could always come back to rezone when the pressure's there. And I agree with you, I think it will happen ultimately because it is high-density student housing.
But I do see the proximity to the expansion of Mission Ranch, which is coming right up behind it, leading into Quail Run up to the north.
Yeah.
So I can see that that's one of the staff's considerations here.
It's almost like a step, it's almost like step-down, step-down zone.
And you have to remember, however you come out at the other end, and I'm sure there are going to be some adjustments, we've still got a substantial amount of area that's under the overlay, which allows people, I mean, would be if we approved the overlay somewhere down the line. You've still got across the city a substantial acreage and number of properties.
Right.
Where shared housing could be applied for, based on the criteria of what shared housing would have to be approved.
Exactly.
Mr. Wright?
I see that the next slide is kind of a wrap-up, so I had a quick question. I know it's not going to work exactly like the RU, where you need any percentages, but looking into the crystal ball of the future, say someone wants to lose their shared housing overlay, is that possible? Do we have that worked out yet?
Do you undo one?
Undo it.
I mean, you can always rezone a property to remove an overlay. However, again, I wouldn't do that on a property-specific level. What the overlay does is it provides those property owners with some additional flexibility within those areas. So I don't see that being a thing that's done very often, if at all. But yes, you do have the ability to rezone property, to remove it if, you know, you find out maybe, you know, an area is changing and it shouldn't be high-density in the future. But I would look at it more as an area as a whole, not just an individual lot.
Yeah, that was a 70-year question, I was just curious.
Yes, you will be here, I may not.
I mean, I don't know, but I'll be here, come on.
Mr. Smith?
Just going back to Counselor Yancey's concern, and I know we can come back and add that overlay later, but I look at, if we, if in HH and II we have current five-bedroom duplexes, are they, are we, without the overlay, we're going to be creating a code enforcement issue.
issue, just right off the bat.
Well, that is true for many of these areas. That's why I think Councilmember Kuna was asking for an overlay map.
Exactly. And I guess that's the thing, it's like if we know that this is already functioning as shared housing, and it's in an area that's, you know, that's reasonably acceptable, then the overlay makes some sense. I do understand the adjacency to the rural and lower-density development out there, but looking at the development patterns that I'm seeing out there, I think it's just a matter of time before that higher-density development continues to spread to the south side of, you know, of Holloman Drive. So it's just something to think about.
Isn't it possible in PQRSTU, you might also have some of those shared housing units?
That is, it is, it is a contained area. This is all vacant property out here.
This is all vacant property?
There's a lot of room for new development out here.
Around it.
And in the PQRSTU, it's a party development area.
My point was limited to the argument about there might be within it some of these five-bedroom, five-bathroom units in any one of these areas that some of us say take the overlay away from. So we're going to have to deal with that at some point.
Yeah, I know what you're saying. I hear your point.
Council, if I may, Alyssa Halli-Schram, Long Range Planning Administrator. The working group that did look at all of the middle housing areas that you're seeing before you, we had at our disposal in GIS, the rental registration list, our short-term rental list, and then also, we got the MLS data for sales of properties that had five or more bathrooms, which typically meant they also had five or more bedrooms. And so that was part of the data that we used in that working group analysis to originally define these areas. So HH and II specifically, there are a few, five, what we assume are five bedrooms or more, structures. That data we looked at was only from the past five years, which is how far back the MLS had it available. So there are a couple in there, so if it's not an overlay, those would be non-conforming uses if they're rented to more than four. So it would be a code enforcement piece. But in general, there aren't that many, but we can certainly have those maps available too for a few journeys.
I thought, we knew at the end of all of this, we'd have 20, 30, 40 properties that we can't reach into because they're in single-family restricted neighborhoods and some areas, and we're going to have to do code enforcement. So I think we'll deal with the legacy properties, I guess you might call it, when we come to that. But right now, we had to get a broad stroke on this. Yes, Mr. Ostrowski?
And another option that you can consider, this is just, you know, what we're doing is we're seeking council's direction on how to move forward with these. So if council is agreeable to kind of proceeding as we're discussing here, the next step is that official rezoning process. So, you know, if there's a desire, we can add these with an overlay and move them through the official rezoning process, and then, you know, at such time as we move through the official zoning process, if there's a lot of opposition, there's a lot of other concerns that come up with these two particular areas, at that point, you can just remove the overlay consideration at that same meeting. So that's another option that you could consider. If you want to tell us to proceed with, you know, HH and II at this time with both middle housing and the overlay, and you want to, you know, hear what the public has to say at the meeting for the official rezoning process, then you could remove it at that time, if that's another thing that you'd like to consider.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, that makes sense. Chance to drive out there and look around a little more.
I see a lot of heads nodding, at least with HHII. I don't think Mr. Smith would agree with PQRSTU.
Well, no, I think that that's a different neighborhood with a whole different character.
Okay, so you wouldn't agree that we should just put the overlay on and then have the hearing, and then if people object, take it off? Okay, okay. He's not changed his mind on that one, that's good. So I think we're only talking about HHII here, so I think you've got a consensus to go ahead and put the overlay on that, and then we'll hear it at the public hearings, and we can easily make a decision to take it off if there is strong opposition.
So just kind of from a public comment standpoint, PQRSTU, just looking at in the packet, we only had two comments on that. One was in disagreement, and one just had some concerns regarding density and parking and so forth. So just, I provide that for your benefit. So kind of wrapping up, so the direction that we're looking at is, one, are you okay with moving forward with the change in the parking requirements, generally a minor change? Two, are you okay with removing shared housing units, shared housing uses from the middle housing zoning districts, and then creating this high occupancy overlay to allow shared housing units in only certain areas that are approved for rezoning? And then also the map recommendations that had been before you. Overall, with this, we've got about 370 or so acres between all of these areas. That's about 1% of the land area in the city. And so when we break that out a little bit further, a little over half of that land area is being recommended for middle housing and the shared housing, a little under half is recommended for just middle housing, and there's about 10 or so acres that are being recommended to be removed in its entirety. So I just want to preface that because it's not a significant amount of land that we're talking for within the city, it's about 1% overall.
Okay, let's handle this one at a time. You heard at the beginning of the presentation about the parking changes. Are there, I think the key there is that by requiring, what, less parking? Repeat your argument for item one, Michael.
So what we're seeing is that because if you have more than three parking spaces that are required on a lot, developers or property owners are not wanting to go to middle housing zoning, because they have more flexibility under general suburban. However, if we want to get back after that affordability nature, we want to encourage people to go to middle housing. And by allowing at least four up front, it kind of puts it at an equal playing field as the general suburban. So we don't see that as a big change.
Ms. Harrell.
I will not be supporting this. You know, if it was just the residents that were parking in front of the houses, you know, that would be fine. But by the time they get their friends, their classmates, their party-goers, they put the trash cans out on the curbs, no, it becomes an absolute parking nightmare. So I will not support adding one more parking space on the street.
But in single-family neighborhoods, did I understand it, you could have four in the front, Michael?
Yeah, I just want to be clear, this is not parking on the street, this is parking on private property. So if middle housing, you can only have three in the front yard. This change would allow you to get up to four in the front yard. In general suburban, yes, you can have four in the front.
So then are you still going to be maintaining that 50% of the front yard is impervious parking or landscape parking?
Yeah, so those requirements still stay within the ordinance.
Pretty tight parking spaces, thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Everybody's okay with that? Do I see a nodding of heads, this is consensus? Yep, I think you can proceed with your proposal on the parking requirements. We had a lot of discussion about the high occupancy overlays. I think most folks thought that this was a really good suggestion, a recommendation to help us move the whole process forward and try to assure the public that not everything is going to shared housing. So I think most folks are pleased with the idea of including that. And now you did hear some specific comments on the map recommendations. You may want to go back and review those again. But I think I didn't hear real strong objection, except for that PQRSTUV, whatever it was. Others, there were some comments, but I think we'll leave that to you, your interpretation, but that's our consensus. Proceed with the map suggestions that you received from us.
Okay, so I'm taking that as proceeding as staff recommendation.
That's correct, and if we have an overlay on SPQRTZU, whatever it was, PQRSTU, then we'll have to vote on that at the time. Ms. Kuna.
Didn't we also, on map five, Michael, can you look at map five for me?
Map five.
Yes, and add the two other areas, correct.
Yeah, so those first two, I think we said we were going to go with overlays and then possibly remove them later?
Yeah, I'm not in favor of it, but I'll have a chance to vote on it next time.
Yeah, okay.
All right, I don't see any other exciting responses here, Mr. Ostrowski, so that's our direction. If there's any specific question beyond that you need answered?
I'm good, thank you for your time.
And time it was. Thank you very much. Okay, so that was a workshop item. We'll look forward to having it coming back to us later on.